All right, North Smithfield Town Council meeting, November 3, 2025. Madam Clerk, can you sign us with prayer and pledge, please?
Thank you for bringing us together today in a spirit of generosity. May we honor one another by keeping an open mind. May we voice our truth and listen with an open heart. May we discern your will to unite in a fruitful outcome. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice.
Thank you. Roll call or a printer.
Mr. Bureau God?
Here.
Mr. Christopher O?
Here.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Here.
Mr. Punchak?
Here.
Ms. House?
Here. Open forum, would anyone like to sign up for open forum before we start?
Scott Sevigny, 33 Hillview Avenue. Just in regards to the grant project that you're going to consider tonight, which I think is, the playground in particular, I think looks really great. I think is much needed over there. My concern comes in to the entire cost of it, particularly the pour-in-place surface that's going to be in the amount of 132,000. With a lot of things that you're considering as a council, particularly a new police station, hollow well is on your table. I think that that grant could probably be reduced a little bit. I, in particular, I'll come from a place of bias, I'm not a fan of pour-in-place. It gives you a little bit of maintenance-free life in the beginning, but then I think, once it fails, then it's come due and you've got to replace the entire thing. I think you should consider, for a cheaper option, going with the engineered wood fibers, which is usually what most playgrounds you'll see around will use. So just for some financial consideration, that would still give you, put you in a position with the, if you switch to the engineered wood fibers, to still be a good sizable grant that you can get to 500,000. Doing the math, if you knock out a lot of the surfacing and the install of it, it still brings you just over 700,000, which still gives you that 500,000 match. You know, gives you, you know, competitive, in being competitive for that large grant. But just with everything that's on your plate, I just urge you to kind of reconsider that portion of it, maybe, you know, tailor it back a little bit, scale it back, and, you know, give you a little bit more that you can consider for police station and for hollow well and any other capital projects that might be coming up.
Thank you. Scott, can you just repeat your address?
33 Hillview Ave.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in open forum today? Anyone else? Our next item is special presentation to North Smithfield's Director of Emergency Management Agency. Mr. Branconia, can I have you come up to the podium, please?
No, I won't sing.
Mr. Branconia?
Yeah?
We'd like to present to you with this citation as it reads to you. Be it known to all on behalf of the people of North Smithfield, the town council, the town administrator, we sincerely thank you for your 54 years of service and leadership as the town's Director of Emergency Management. During periods of extreme weather events, including hurricanes, snowstorms, floods, as well as pandemic, your steadfast commitment to serving the needs of our residents has been exemplary. We congratulate you on your retirement and wish you Godspeed in your civilian stage in life.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
We also have this class for you. North Smithfield Town Council and Town Administrator recognizes Mr. Peter Branconia for outstanding leadership during your 50 years as Director of North Smithfield Emergency Management Agency.
Thank you, thank you.
We also like to recognize people who were here tonight. Chief Tom Lafferty, Chief David Chaudier, Mark Pappas, Director of Rhode Island Emergency Management, Representative Brian Newberry, Beth, you're here to represent him, and members of North Smithfield Emergency Management Agency, Jay Levinson, Deputy Director, and Dan Taylor, Deputy Director. I'm sorry.
And the others, sorry.
And all the others.
Yep, we'll do is, first I'd like to invite Director Pappas.
Haven't seen you in a while, how you been?
How you doing? Good to see you, man. Can I say a few words?
Sure.
I get to say a couple?
Just don't sing.
I won't sing. So, this is a great day, we're celebrating a great career, 50 years. Fifty. I was like 10, right? Some people don't know this, but this is not Peter's first gig. When he was a young lad, he and his family landed at Plymouth Rock on the Mayflower. Then he blazed his way across the country with a couple of dudes known as Lewis and Clark. Helped write a couple of drafts of the Declaration of Independence and the Articles of the Constitution, so thank you for your early work, Peter, awesome.
Yeah.
But seriously, Peter Branconia, 50 years, has some unbelievable attributes that make him stellar Emergency Management Director. Two are the most important, in my view. Number one, he has a passion for the job. If you have passion for the job, that's an unbeatable attribute. And number two, he cares about the town and all the people that live here. He genuinely cares to keep people safe. And that commitment to public service is evident, having been here for 50-plus years, an amazing career. I was in Governor McKee's office recently talking about emergency management, of all things, and told him that Peter was retiring, and without hesitation, wanted to write you a proclamation, so with your permission, counsel, sir, I will read it. Certificate of Special Recognition. Be it known that I, Daniel J. McKee, Governor of the state of Rhode Island, wish to acknowledge Peter Branconia in grateful recognition of 50 years plus of distinguished service and leadership as the Director of Emergency Management for the town of North Smithfield. With sincere appreciation for your unwavering commitment to excellence during periods of extreme weather events, including hurricanes, snowstorms, floods, as well as throughout COVID, serving the needs of the residents of North Smithfield exceptionally. I join the residents of Rhode Island in expressing our greatest admiration and deep gratitude for a job well done. It is my great honor to issue this certificate of special recognition. You have my best wishes for continued success, given under my hand and the seal of the Office of the Governor, this day, the 12th of November, 2025. Daniel J. McKee, Governor. Congratulations. Did what he had to do. All right, now, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll bring you back up in a few minutes for another picture.
Okay.
And now, Representative Newberry's better hat, Beth Newberry.
Brian, wanted to pass along that he's very sorry he can't be here tonight. Unfortunately, he's at the Ripek meeting discussing the state's finances with other legislators. So, but he did want me to pass along his gratitude and appreciation for all that you've done, along with this citation. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And enjoy retirement.
Chief Stayer, Chief Chaudier, Chief Lafferty, Director Pappas, the Deputy Directors of Rhode Island, probably more so than EMA, you can all come forward.
Fifty years. We started with Hurricane Edith, and last big storm was Irene. The most famous that I think I can remember is the Blizzard of '78. A week, most town roads were closed. I had two rented snowmobiles. And myself and Dean Bailey, who has passed away since, went out delivering food, medicine, and even milk from Wright's Dairy Farm to the people in Lake Bolaire. I was a teacher at the time, and one of the teachers who worked with me was in the National Guard. And I called Ronnie and I said, Ronnie, we've got a big problem. We have a whole bunch of cattle stuck out on Reservoir Road in North Smithfield, no food. So what they did is they brought a helicopter in and actually airdropped hay to those cows so they wouldn't starve. And it's been one wonderful thing after another to help the community. I've been born here, I plan on dying here. But the thing is that I wanted to serve my community the best I could, and I did for all that time. I appreciate all the town administrators who had enough faith in me to reappoint me every year for the past 50 years. Thank you.
All right, the next item is discussion by council vote of other action on collective bargaining International Brotherhood of Police Officers Local 410. Continuation of public hearing.
We have to reopen the public hearing, right?
Councilman, I believe that you should do that, but I think it was continued to today, right?
Yeah.
I would reopen it, yes.
I'd like to make a motion to reopen the public hearing for the International Brotherhood of Police Officers Collective Bargaining Agreement.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher O?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes. Did anyone, do we want to talk about anything from the Budget Committee before people come up, or?
The Budget Committee.
The Budget Committee's not here, but in your package is the Budget Committee's overview, which is consistent with comments at the last meeting.
Did the council have anything they wanted to mention about their memo? Anyone want to get up to speak regarding the police contract?
The only thing I would like to mention about the Budget Committee's memo is that I appreciate them expediting the conversation. I know that it had to happen in a short period of time, so they did a great job getting together to get that done, so, thank you, Budget Committee.
Anyone have anything else? Again, anyone want to speak regarding the, in the public hearing? No? Should we close it?
I would like to make, like to make a motion to close the public hearing for the International Brotherhood of Police Officers Collective Bargaining Agreement.
That's a motion, is there a second? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher O?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes. Can we approve it now?
14 days.
14 days, okay, all right. What'd you say? Okay. Next item is discussion by council vote of other action on North Smithfield Police Station A, except recommendation from Engineering and Construction Consulting.
Good evening, Council President and members. Thanks for having me here tonight. I do have some hard copies of this, if anyone would like to have that, so it's a little easier to read.
I think we already have it.
It's the same.
Yeah, okay.
All right, as of last meeting, we decided to come back, we had to come back today. And I will present the process that we went through and then the final recommendations. And tonight, we're looking for a vote from the Town Council to award to the specific contractor for the CM at-risk contract. Great, thank you. So as you know, we've kind of, we've run through this process before, but I will go through it again for anyone that hasn't heard this. This, the construction manager at risk process. We went out to an RFQP process, which is a request for qualifications and pricing proposals to several CM companies, construction management companies. We had a list of 11 that were interested. We end up getting four proposals or statements of qualifications from four different contractors. And those four contractors, now we'll jump ahead here, but it was Gilbane, Parasol, Downs Construction, and Dubon Masonry. With that process, we put together a subcommittee, which is members of the council, members of town administration, the design team, and also the OPM, the Onus Project Manager, myself. That evaluation process was a three-step process. We went through a technical proposal, which was reviewing their actual submissions, which is their resumes, their work history, and any other company information that that was, that was submitted. That included reference checks, both credit and project reference checks. Step two was, we conducted interviews. Typically, after that step one, you would shortlist to a small number. We only had four, so we decided to go with all four to the interviews. Those interviews were all held on the same day, and everyone from the subcommittee was involved in that. During that interview process, we had specific questions that was asked by every, asked to every company. The companies did their own presentations, and then the subcommittee evaluated them on their responses and their presentations. We also had some individual questions that we would ask, each one, that was, they're all the same. And we scored them on their. Each one, that was, they're all the same, and we scored them on their, their responses. And then the step three was actually the pricing proposal review. Every firm had submitted a pricing proposal, and that was a part of the evaluation, the third part of that evaluation, that all these steps put together in that evaluation, then kind of put together the entire scoring for that company. Mind going to the next one, CJ? Thank you. The four companies, just an overview of the four companies. Gilbane, which is a very large company, Rhode Island-based, it's their small business, small construction team, but very large firm, very, a lot of construction management experience, and they do have deep reach back in their company, just because they're so large, they are nationwide, they have a lot of strength in, in, in project, projects. Very strong project team, very, very good references, all checked in. And their pricing proposal was estimated in-house, so they have an in-house estimator, that's who did their estimating for this project. It was the highest estimate out of the group, but they, but Gilbane had the lowest CM fees. So their actual construction management fees for overall, the overall project was the lowest. Parasol Builders, another great CM company, they, very, they're a very experienced project team, positive references again. And one thing about Parasol was that their estimating was actually done with subcontractors' input, so about seventy-five, eighty percent of their estimate was from a subcontractor. So the, the comfort level in their estimate was actually really, really, really good. Downs Construction, another CM experience, they don't have a lot of work in Rhode Island, most of the stuff was in Connecticut. A lot of the stuff they do in Rhode Island is actually OPM services, but they had a great, actually really good background in, in public safety buildings. Very rich history in that. Great, great references, strong project team. Their estimate was in the, they had a combination of in-house estimating and some subs, but in their estimate, it was kind of in the middle of the road. Dubon Masonry, another great firm, they had a lot of building knowledge, so they did, actually did some of the renovation work on the police station a couple of years ago, experienced firm. They didn't have much in the construction management experience, they only had really one project that they proposed to us that they had worked on. And that, that kind of read in their, kind of how we evaluated them. They were the lowest estimate out of the group, but they also, their estimate was also based off of a percentage basis. And they also had great references also. This is kind of tough to read here, but these are the evaluation, the criteria evaluations. Let me get my glasses on here. So you can see the call, the, actually qualification package is that first block's in the top left there. Once all the evaluators had scored the packages, Gilbane was actually the highest on that one, with Parasol right below them in that scoring. The interview process, you can see here, Parasol was the highest scoring on that, with Downs right behind them. The pricing proposals, Gilbane, I'm sorry, Parasol was the highest of that, was sixteen fifty, and then with actually Dubon right behind them, and then the other two tied in that third spot. And then the overall rankings, once you put all this together and we calculate this without the price proposal, Parasol was the highest scoring at seven sixty-five. And then with the pricing proposal, as you can see, those numbers go way up, but yeah, twenty, two thousand four hundred and fifteen was the total for Parasol. Some of the evaluation criteria here, as you can see, the qualification package was firm experience, similar projects as a CM, understanding the project, so they all came in with their, their thoughts on the project, their phasing ideas, and then their references. All the references were great, which is good to hear for having just four of them. And the interview process, obviously, we have the presentation from the firm, the project approach, and then the phasing approach, and then all the question responses. And the CM, I'm sorry, the price proposal evaluation was the CM fees, basically what their cost is to actually do this as a CM project. General conditions, estimate, and then there, we did some cost leveling, which I'll see on the next slide. All right, so here you can see, was there another slide in there? Yeah, right there. In this, I apologize, this is blurry. When they, the CMs provided their cost proposals, or their estimates, with their cost proposals, us ECC took all that information and, you know, compared it to each other. As you can see, the, on the top here where it says, "As submitted," those are the numbers that they actually submitted, and totaled up at, you know, at the bottom with all their CM fees, their general conditions, and their estimates. That also added in, we added, then we added in any soft costs, the add alternates, all that. Those are the numbers on the top there. And then what we do with that, with that information is we then take that and level it out. So if the pre-construction phase, some, some firms had three months, some firms had one month, so we leveled that off to like a two-month duration. And what you do is you take their CM fees for that timeframe, and you either add or subtract it to be leveled out. Same thing with the construction phase, if they had, some had ten months, some had twelve months, some had fourteen months. So we leveled that off, all off to twelve months, and that's what gives you these totals at the very bottom here, with, in all, in both cases, well, Parasol came in at total with soft costs and add alternates, eight point, just under eight point nine million. Dubon is the lowest, but that was, you know, out of their evaluation. It was, it's recommended that we, you know, go with Parasol. So the thought of tonight is, with this information, we come to the Town Council tonight to vote to award this contract to Parasol Builders. Any questions? I know I kind of went through that kind of fast.
I have a quick question. Gilbane is, like, they're a legit company.
Yes.
Very legit.
Very legit.
The other three came in fairly close to each other. What is Gilbane looking at? What are they seeing that they're forty percent higher than Parasol? What, are they seeing something that nobody else is seeing? Are they looking at that building and saying, it's going to be a little more than you guys think?
I don't think, I don't think so. They did come in, they were, they were the, the CM that came in and asked us to push it off because they couldn't, they couldn't staff it until March. So that's why we added that timeframe in there. But their numbers, just going through their actual estimates, their numbers were high kind of across the board. I don't think they're seeing something that we're not seeing, because the other three were actually pretty close to each other, and I have confidence in the three there that they're pretty close to each other, that, that kind of justifies that.
Okay. I just hesitate, only because I don't want to, however we do it, we find it, and then come to find out that, ooh, yeah, it's going to be closer to fourteen.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I get that. Their estimate, again, is in-house. In-house estimates, that's based off of RS means, historical data, which is not always, it can be high, because you're going off of last year's data. Parasol, again, was based off of seventy-five, eighty percent of actual sub information. So that actually, actually gave it out to their subcontractors, and they put numbers to it. So those are pretty solid numbers, and that's something that I probably would, you know, be more comfortable with, because you're getting real, you know, true numbers for that day. Yeah.
So with the references that we had of the different companies, like for Parasol, for instance, because they do their, their estimating the way they do it, did any of the references come back and say that there was a swing in the total cost from?
No.
Or, no?
No, no.
There was no mention?
And Parasol did that estimate that way, obviously because they wanted to get it right. If we had more time, the other companies probably would have done the same thing.
Okay.
Parasol doesn't have an in-house estimator, so they had to go out.
And if I could add, typically, seeing that my previous life was as a developer, we always rely on the contractors to go out, out of house and go to the subs for hard numbers.
Yep.
If they're just doing in-house estimates, it's not worth a lot.
Exactly.
If I could also just clarify one thing, not to jump the gun, Council President, but Mr. Fickron made the comment that he's making a recommendation that a contract be awarded to Parasol. What is being asked tonight is for the council to vote in agreement with the consultant's ECC's recommendation on Parasol as the contractor. Actually, awarding the contract will not happen tonight, and it will happen subsequent to us going through the tenth budget conversation and actually coming up and doing a more detailed breakdown of the construction numbers and some past history on the construction numbers. So you will not be voting tonight to award a contract.
We're just accepting.
Accepting the recommendation.
Technically, though, aren't we awarding the seventeen thousand dollar pre-construction aspect of the contract?
It's not until they present to us a contract for execution, and that contract is going to have to reflect numbers that we're comfortable with, whether or not it's in the original proposal or not. Once we select, we have the ability to go back and modify.
So the form of contract was not stipulated in the bid documents? Is it a AIA, CM?
Yes.
It was stipulated?
Yeah.
So which one was it, do you recall?
I might have to look.
Because I'm assuming the form of contract is the form where you, part one is the pre-construction, and then part two is the actual, once you have the GMP.
Yep.
So if that form of contract was stipulated, and the town was accepting of that, then why wouldn't we be voting on that contract to be seventeen thousand, whatever, for the pre-construction, part one of the contract? Once that's completed, you go into part two of the contract, and that is for the build.
I mean, that's clearly the call of the council. I think the main point was, clearly, we have to go through pre-construction work in order to get a hard GMP number. And if you wanted to authorize to proceed with that, at least that stage, that's fine, but I wanted the council to know that we still have to have a conversation regarding budget. That budget's going to be based on what was presented in the proposal, but we won't have that hard budget until they do pre-construction work.
So I guess I'm just trying to, if, if we don't vote to move forward, would, like, what are we doing? We're not moving the project forward.
So I think we are voting to move it forward. We're going to accept the recommendation of the engineering of ECC, but to the administrator's point, there's a significant gap between the four point four that was agreed upon in October of 2024 and the numbers that have been proposed by Parasol, as well as the others. I think it's our responsibility to our constituents to be able to provide an understanding of what occurred between October of 2024 and now. So I would feel most comfortable holding on awarding the contract until we have a better understanding of the numbers. My opinion.
And in reality, we're only talking about a week.
Right. We're talking about it on the tenth.
And I think there's just a, you know, again, as I, as I said on numerous occasions, what's happened in the past is not relevant to decisions that we have to make now. However, for transparency purposes, I'm sure there's some clarification that people do want to have, and being able to understand exactly what were the assumptions and parameters under that original number may provide a lot of insight into why there's a difference now.
Yeah, like, I don't think we're going to get back to four point four. I, I don't think we're going to get close to that, but again, I think we owe it to our constituents to understand what transpired between then and now, before we go ahead and approve a contract when we don't necessarily have an understanding of what informant numbers.
Yeah. And we are working on, we have been working on that since the last meeting.
Yes.
We just submitted some stuff for review from the, from the team, and that has all that history in there.
Thank you.
Yep, and we'll have that ready for presentation next week.
Thank you so much.
As well as a schedule review.
Excellent.
Yep.
And now, next week, it will be you and Signal Works here, is that?
Signal Works will be here, Ingle will be here, yep.
All right, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, as, as the solicitor obviously astutely observed, that's why he gets paid the big bucks. We don't even have a contract in front of us to vote on.
Also true.
Right.
We can reference it, but if we don't have the contract in front of us, there's nothing to discuss.
Okay. All right, does anyone have any other questions, or Brian? Anyone want to make a motion?
Well, what's the motion?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We're making a motion to accept their recommendation for Parasol.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's right. It's basically the council voting to accept the recommendation by the consultant that Parasol will be the firm selected to do this project.
I mean, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of ECC for Parasol, Parasol Builders for the CMAR on the police station project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Rule call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much.
See you next week.
Thank you.
Discussion by council vote of other action on payment of bills. Anyone have any questions on the packet? No, I didn't do that. Anyone else? No? Any questions, John? Any questions on the bill?
Thank you.
Claire, any questions?
No.
All right, with that said.
I will make a motion to approve the payment of bills for November third, 2025, in the amount of three hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars and six cents.
That's a motion. Is there a second? Any discussion? Rule call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes. New business, discussion by council vote of other action on appointment to boards and committees, Public Arts Advisory Committee. There is an application in your packet. Anyone want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to appoint Sarah Lamberty to the Public Arts Advisory Committee.
That's a motion. Is there a second? Any discussion? Rule call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes. Discussion by council vote of other action on communication from Town Administrator, Mr. Gibbs. Number one is Riedem Large Development Grant Application, Pacheco Park, Phase One, and request for approval of resolution.
Yes, the Open Space Recreation Grant Program by DEM is requesting proposals. Deadline for the submission of proposals is the eighteenth of this month, therefore, this resolution will authorize us to submit the proposal. It's important, and I might add, this representative of the Parks and Recreation Committee here tonight, who's going to want to also make a comment. It's important to point out, however, that although we are officially submitting a grant for the max, for the large grant amount, the half a million dollars, which is a seventy-five percent match, following submission, and even after following awarding, we have flexibility to modify within the general parameters of the grant program. And we express that to the Parks and Rec Committee, in that we will continue to work with Parks and Rec on the actual design elements of the proposed improvements, which are three-pronged. One is a ADA compliant plate structure. The second is a path that's going to be constructed around Pacheco Park. And the third is to make parking access improvements to the building. As to the comment made regarding the all-purpose surface for the play facility. As to the comment made regarding the all-purpose surface for the play facility, we're open for these conversations. The issue, though, is this has to be ADA compliant, so we'll work very closely with the designers on this. You can do an ADA compliant surface with the wood chips, however, those wood chips have to be addressed on an annual basis to make sure they continue to meet compliance. With that being said, we're not wedded to that. Obviously, any opportunity we have to control construction numbers is welcomed. At a half a million dollars, our maximum, our project cost has to be at least six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. So, you know, any opportunity we have to pare the project back in terms of total cost to get to that point is reduces the amount of money that we'd have to put in. We do have currently in reserves a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty dollars that we have available to use for this project already. This project will go over two years, the award would be made and construction wouldn't commence until summer, late summer of next year, and construction would go into the next fiscal years too. So we have, if we have a gap on total funding, and we'll be working very closely over the next few months to nail that down, then we'd have to go back to the council on two successive budget cycles to ask for additional money. But at this point in time, what we're submitting is a concept, they agree with the concept, we're going for the maximum amount, this is a great opportunity for the town to finally address the issues of Pacheco Park. So in your package is a resolution, which we need in order to include that in the package for the grant submission as evidence of local support.
So I just have a question on the, on the memo from Rhode Island DEM, right? It says that the, that the determination is specific to this proposal project, it's valid until July first of two thousand twenty. So everything that they're stating in here, is that still valid today?
Yes, it is. That just is probably just a misstatement on their part. This grant application is due the eight, the eighteenth of this month, so obviously that's incorrect.
Well, I mean, it has to do with like all the wetlands and all that stuff, so.
Their wetland permits, what she's referring to.
Yeah, so is that?
Yeah.
We're still okay?
Yeah, we're still okay. Mark Corillo has been working with DEM from day one on this.
Okay.
And they're very supportive.
Alright.
In looking through the numbers and some of the supplementary documents, does any, does this project also entail enhancing what is already there, like the tennis courts, the basketball courts?
No, it's there to specifically fund the things identified in the grant, which is the play structure, access, parking, and walking path. And those are consistent with the conversations that Mark's had with the EM on it. I mean, we would love to get more money, and if more money comes available, clearly we can go after it to deal with other issues, but this, one, one of the things it will do, where the current play facility is, which is gonna be moved, that area is gonna be cleaned up with ground cover, and that's, we're gonna have places like park benches and stuff there so people can sit down and have lunch and recreate. So that's still there.
Do we need more parking?
We need to address the, the access. What we will be doing is the current paved area, that's being taken out.
Okay.
Okay, so the entrance, we're gonna be addressing that. There's always been conversations about the signage coming in, parking on the left side of it coming in, then better defining the parking spaces and lay that out. So we will get greater efficiency in parking, but there's still parking under heavy use times, there's still parking that's occurring in unapproved surfaces there along the woods. So even though we're improving parking, I think under peak times, there probably will still be insufficient parking. One of the things we'd like to do, and I don't wanna talk out of school here so far, but we also wanna engage in conversations with the two commercial building owners next door to see if there's a way that we can collaborate on this thing, to come up with a more, I think, utilitarian approach to that whole parking area, while at the same time protecting their rights for their, for their customers. So we are, we are gonna have that conversation. The nice thing about this is we do have a window where we can continue to work on these elements and modify the scope as long as it's consistent with the grant application.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone have any other questions? So in this resolution, by having its specify estimated total cost approximately, that gives us the movement to, to work with.
That's correct.
It should come down, right?
That's correct. As long as we're within that seventy-five percent threshold and we're meeting the overall scope of what we said, we're fine.
You know, it seems every time that you talk about grants, someone's asking about playground equipment. Here it is.
Yeah, it's an acute problem. The structure that we have out there, we've been warned previously by the Rhode Island Trust about insurance liability issues. We, this is, this is an issue that has to be addressed. We don't have a choice. Or we could just tear it out. Good luck with that one. We'll give him your phone number.
Of course. Don't blame me.
I'm joking. I just wanna reiterate, we do have a representative of the Parks and Rec Committee who's here to make a comment in favor of the grant application, I assume.
Okay. May I just ask a quick question? So this, this resolution, this grant isn't necessarily definitive.
I'm sorry?
Like, we don't definitively have this grant, right? So we're going to apply for it.
We're applying for the grant.
But it doesn't necessarily mean that we will get it.
That is correct.
Okay.
Teresa Griss, seventeen ninety pound till road. I'm the chairperson of the Parks and Rec Commission. We, as a commission, met with town administrator Gibbs on October fourteenth regarding the conceptual plan for Pacheco Park with an ADA compliant playground. We have discussed it as a group and are in support of the plan. We are asking for the council's support in moving forward with this project and the grant. Thank you.
Thank you.
What do we have to lose?
Right.
Right?
No, yeah, right.
There's nothing, there's nothing to lose. It's an application to hopefully get something.
Did they?
We're pretty confident that we're gonna get the grant.
Did they say when they award it?
I, I'm sure they told Mark, I'm not aware of the date.
Alright.
Usually April.
April?
Usually is, yeah.
Okay.
The, not to take over, but the, the application period actually feels a little early this year, and then the committee that scores will meet January, February, and then it'll go to the, those recommendations will then go to the DEM director, who will then have final say on, on all projects that are awarded, and I'll probably make an announcement typically. It's been equal, could be a little early because this round has come a little bit early.
Thank you. Alright, anyone like to make a motion?
Sure. I will make a motion to accept the resolution of the town council supporting Rhode Island DEM twenty twenty-six Recreation Development and Acquisition Grant Application.
That's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Rule call, please.
Mr. Bureau Guard?
Yes.
Mr. Christopheraro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Exciting. I'm glad I put up such a stink about playground.
Discussion by council vote or other action on payment of invoice number two four one five dash one one five to Signal Works for Police Station Renovations. So this is just their monthly invoice that was submitted for payment, and we just have to approve that. Anyone wanna make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the Signal Works' October invoice in the amount of, yes, two thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars and sixteen cents.
Second.
That's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Rule call, please.
Mr. Bureau Guard?
Yes.
Mr. Christopheraro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes. Discussion by council vote or other action on FY two thousand twenty-five proposed reservation requests, Mr. Sanash?
So every year after the fiscal year is complete, we come to the council to request the reserves to be, the surplus expenditures from FY twenty-five or whatever year that is, or unspent capital to be put into reserves. In front of you is the list of those reserves that we wanna request to be put onto that list. And as you can see, some of them are, like I said, unspent capital, some of them are just expenditure surpluses that we had. These are usually determined by the department head. We will ask the department head or the administrator what's needed to be put aside, and this is the list that we come up with.
So this is what we can work from next year?
Plus whatever is already existing. And we are in the, we are in the middle of transitioning to a capital asset fund. So our idea is that we give all department heads, all the administration, until end of FY twenty-six to spend these, and then they're gone. And then we, you know, transition into the capital asset fund, how the auditors deem us, deem how we should be doing it this whole time.
So when you say they're gone?
Any of the small stuff, so obviously the larger capital items, any type of playground stuff, heavy equipment, roads and stuff like that, that'll be put into the capital asset fund.
Okay.
Because those are capital assets. Any of the small stuff, like, you know, like you have IT needs, those small things, little bit of surplus expenditures that are from the prior year are gonna be wiped out, they're gonna be put into the unassigned fund balance.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
So what you'll see, go in the next year, you're gonna see one number, called the capital fund account. There'll be a secondary document which may outline the various projects, but for going forward, we won't have that. Multiple products, or multiple projects, it's sort of a menu.
Yeah, in your budget next, in this FY twenty-seven, yeah, exactly. We won't have the individual capital projects for the departments. We're gonna have one set capital item, and we'll list, we'll obviously itemize them out on a separate supplemental sheet, similar to what we've done before, but it, on the actual budget sheet, it's just gonna look a little bit different. Not, no major changes.
Alright, great. Thank you. Anyone have any questions on the reserves? Anyone make a motion to accept the reserves?
I will make a motion to accept the reserves in the amount of four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred eighty-three dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Rule call, please.
Mr. Bureau Guard?
Yes.
Mr. Christopheraro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes. Open forum pursuant to forty-two dash forty-six dash sixty, maximum of three minutes per person. Does anyone wanna speak? Just for the record, there's two people here and no one has, wants to speak. Alright, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.